I'm going to go ahead and call to order. This is a Granberry City Council regular meeting. It is 6:00 PM, Tuesday, June 6, 2023. We are at Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granberry, Texas, 76048. And as I like to do each time, I would like to remind you that we are live at www.granberry.org/live. And you can see the meetings on YouTube if you choose to watch it at a later point in time. So now we'll have our invocation. Ms. Diane Raspberry, Pastor Hope Community Church. Reverend Raspberry?
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for your love and your mercy that you pour into our lives each day. Father, we thank you for each council member. We thank you for their commitment and their dedication to our community. Father, I ask that you give them wisdom and discernment as they make the decisions that affect all of us. Father, I ask that you bless them, that you bless each person that's here. And Father, I just ask that you keep us safe and that you draw us closer to you and closer to one another. Father, we ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
If you'll join me for their pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you all. Now, the proclamation and presentation, and we're going to do some recognition, I think. If we could get the Memorial Way and Aiden Wolf to come up, please?
If they all turned up at camp, we would be great.
Talk about me? Apparently not. Aiden, thank you for coming up today. I have the certificate of recognition here. It's proudly presented to Aiden Wolf for his example as a high school student in honoring our veterans and first responders by supporting Friends of Memorial Lane Activities. And I give this under my hand on this sixth day of June 2023. Aiden, I know that you have not missed a Memorial Lane event since the first one that you came to. So about how many have you attended? Two years worth?
With the grades and everything, it's been almost 14 of us that either walked in our honorific banners or showed up at home.
And this is why you're achieving solitorian at Toller High?
Yes.
Quite an individual here. Now, you still, you say you've chosen the University of Texas. There's still a chance. I mean, you might. Okay, never mind.
Well, and Mayor, a big surprise, because he doesn't know that. I have something for you.
Go right ahead, sure.
So, we were given by an anonymous donor, a scholarship specifically for Aiden for all of his help with us.
And I would turn that to Mr. Kaufman very quickly.
And just so y'all know, Aiden does not just volunteer with Memorial Lane.
Yes, sir. I'd like to just thank all the city staff that worked so hard to put together the budget
Just this school year alone, he has volunteered approximately 164 hours for various organizations,
draft that we submitted to the council and all the thought and preparation that went
including Memorial Lane, TMAD, or Teens Making a Difference, Hood County Substance Abuse
into that. And we're still working through many aspects of that draft budget.
Council, StuCo, and Mission Granberry.
And as we discussed yesterday, we've got to finalize that out by the end of July.
So, on behalf of Memorial Lane, we would like to surprise you with a scholarship
And so we'll get the numbers from the appraisal district and be able to finalize the revenue streams. But anyway, I just wanted to, you know, give a hearty thank you to all of you that worked
of $1,000.
And don't go away.
so hard to help us put that budget together.
Other council? I would like to just echo what City Manager Kaufman had said and to congratulate, or We are going to ask Jeff to come down and take a few photos before we depart here. Aiden, that's quite an accomplishment. Thank you. to say thank you in particular to all of those people who did not present yesterday. Appreciate you so much. You want back over here?
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll do one. Because there was a heck of a lot of work that went on behind the scenes that you never One more? Thank you. I think there was two. get to see. But the presentations, I'm disappointed that all of you weren't there to enjoy the budget presentations. I know that's a Monday, that's a big Monday for me. But the work that was put into this is fantastic, and it pays in dividends, and you see it all around the city every day. So, thank you to the staff. Very appreciative. Anybody? No? Okay. City Secretary, do we have anybody signed up for public comments on agenda items for non-public hearing items? There are none? Okay, I'm going to call an audible here. We've had a lot of wheels turning and a lot of wheels moving in the same direction, but we've finally got everybody here in the back room to take about 30 minutes to do some upgrading or updating the council on some specific activities. So, I am going to declare that the Granberry City Council is convened into open session. All members are present. The city council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following. Those are consultations with attorney pending or contemplated, deliberation regarding real property, and deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, which are all going to be handled tonight. Now, I know that I'm throwing you a curve ball here, so I would say to you that we will not reconvene until at least 7:00 PM. So, I apologize for that not being on the agenda, but like I said, we have had just a number of different wheels turning trying to get to this place today. And we're here, we need to accomplish this, and then we will be back here no earlier than 7:00 o'clock. Thank you. Okay, it is 7:01. We are going to reconvene. I now declare that the Granberry City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in the closed session, and all council members are present. So, we will reconvene our meeting. We will move right along to number six, which is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine, or previously discussed items will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Council, we have approving city council meetings. We have authorized the city manager to approve items on the public works approved products list and to consider approving updated language to the City of Granberry Personnel Manual. Does anyone want to pull anything to the deliberation agenda? No? Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Dr. Wadley makes a motion. Councilwoman Burwell, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. It passes 6-0. We'll now move to agenda item 7.2. There will be a public hearing on this, and I will call 7.1. And I will call anyone who wants to speak as we get into the agenda after we hear from the staff. This is to execute a facilities improvement agreement, which is FIA 23-03, binding between the City of Granberry and Joshua Ventures LTD, who's the developer. It's for the construction of approximately 300 line feet of water line, 789 line feet of sanitary sewer line, and 277, it's linear feet, of storm drainage. The approximate cost of the construction is $164,631. The developer has chosen a letter of credit which covers 100% of the cost. And in the same agenda item, there will be a final plat, final plat, a 6.967 acre tract of the Myland County School Land Survey, Block 2, abstract number 348, as lots 1-3, Block 6 of Sandstone Estates. The property is located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Loop 567 and Highway 51, PL-2023-06. Mr. Kaufman?
You bet. This is Mr. Greer's project. Thank you for sticking around, Mr. Greer. He's been a very active developer in our community for quite some time. I'll turn it over to our Director of Community Development, Ms. Kara Wawie, to walk us through this project. Too many W's in there.
That's all right. Thank you. Let's see. I think we're going to try to click her here. There we go. Here's your first slide, the presentation. Your site is shown there on an aerial map with the overall project in blue color. That's at the northeast corner of Loop 567 and Wellerford Highway. And this is to final plat, three commercial lots right there in the corner. This is your zoning map, shows that the lots are zoned like commercial. And to the east is Sandstone Single Family Development. The remaining parcels surrounding are currently primarily undeveloped with interim holding zoning. And this is just a snapshot of the corner there. The final plat application, and this is the final plat drawing. The applicant has requested one variance, that's for Lot 1, which is the lower right on that drawing. That lot, they're requesting to delay the installation of a water line along the frontage of Loop 567. The city engineer has reviewed that and has recommended approval. Staff recommends approval as well. That'll come along as that lot develops, it'll be put in with that single lot. So this is a variance request, the city engineer's memo, details on that variance request. Statements about the DRC review of the plat. The plat is in order and ready for your consideration. On May 8, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered both the variance and the preliminary plat and comes to you with recommendation of approval of both of those items. Staff recommendation on the variance is for approval. Your voting options are to approve the variance presented or to deny the variance. And then on the FIA would be the next motion item, would be staff is recommending approval, authorizing the city manager to execute the facilities improvement agreement. And your voting options there on the screen. And then the final plat, recommend approval as presented. I'll back up so you can see those voting options. So this, the first one would be the variance. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Council, questions, staff? Okay. Just want to make sure I'm reading this right. A notice on the final plat of line, for line extension completion prior to the Lot 3 development. So, we would not complete this entire plat without having the eight-inch water line.
Right. That Lot Number 3 has the frontage along Loop 567 where that line would be. That would be installed with that Lot Number 3.
Right. At that point in time. Okay. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open the public meeting. Mr. Greer is here, if there's anyone that would like, has a question for him. And he has signed in. No questions for Mr. Greer. Any other questions? Comments? Okay. I'm going to close the public meeting. All right. Do I hear a motion to consider the following requests? Mr. Carl Greer to execute a facilities improvement agreement, FIA 23-03, binding between the City of Granberry and Joshua Ventures LTD for the construction of approximately 300 linear feet of water line, 789 linear feet of sanitary sewer line, and 227 linear feet of storm drainage. The approximate cost of the construction is $164,631. The developer has chosen a letter of credit which covers 100% of the cost. And final plat, a 6.97 acre tract of the Myland County School Land Survey, Block 2, abstract number 348, as lots 1-3, Block 6 of Sandstone Estates. And the property is located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Loop 567 and Highway 51. The proper motions, is there, will there be two motions here or just the one?
Take up the square.
Two. Okay. So we'll vote on the variance as presented first?
Mayor.
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I'll make a motion that we approve the variance as presented.
I'll second.
Ms. Burwell, seconds. Motion's been made that we approve the variance as presented. No comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. The variance as presented is approved by 6.0. Do I hear a motion that we approve the FIA?
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I'll make a motion that we approve the FIA.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Dr. Wadley makes a second. Discussion, nope. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. It is approved 6-0. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Greer. Appreciate you hanging around.
For the plat.
And the plat.
Mayor.
Yes?
I make a motion that we approve the final plat as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Burwell. The motion's made.
Mayor, I second that.
Mr. Rodriguez, seconds the motion. All in favor of approving the final plat as presented?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? I hear no nays. The final plat as presented is also approved. Is there another page here? Oh, good. Now, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Number two, it's also going to be a public hearing. Consider the request of Vicky L. Nivens to replat lots 1A and 1B, Block 61 of the Nut Edition, as Lot 1AR of Block 61 of the Nut Edition. The property is located at the southeast corner of the intersection of North Cleburne Street and East Bridge Street. This will be PL 2023-07. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. We have recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll let Kara Wawie review those with us as well.
Thank you. So, this is our location map. This site is right there on that corner lot there off of Cleburne and Bridge Street. The site is .234 acres and is a residential replat of an existing lot. The two lots, the purpose is to combine two lots to facilitate reinvestment redevelopment of the site. This is the zoning map. The site is zoned R8.4, 8,400 square foot lots. Surrounding area to the east, north, and west is similarly zoned and residential in nature. To the south is commercial zoning and commercial properties. The historic preservation has already reviewed a proposal to renovate the existing residential structure and remove a such structure on the south portion of the site. So that zoning was the HP overlay, the historic preservation overlay. And this is a photograph of the existing improvements. The plat application, the replat showing the combining of the two lots into one and the adjacent streets as well as lots. This is the utility plan. There's a variance not to extend an eight-inch sewer line along Cleburne and not to upsize the six-inch line on Bridge. So other infrastructure serves the site and it's available. There's a second variance to not provide a 15-foot street-side utility easement along Cleburne. There's existing structure that would be in the way of that 15-foot wide easement. So they're proposing a five-foot easement as due to that existing improvement. That's the variance application, the city engineer's memo. City engineer examined the proposal and supports the request. The DRC reviewed the proposal, and this just demonstrates the infrastructure and service delivery is available to the property. And because it's a residential replat, we're required to send notification to surrounding properties that are in that existing residential subdivision. So we mailed out 20 notices on April 27. We also provide newspaper notice, that was done on April 22. We received six letters in support of the proposal and none in opposition. The prior board of commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission, recommended approval of both the variances and the replat. Staff is recommending approval of the plat and the variances as well. And these are your voting options. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Council, questions for staff? No? I'm going to open the public hearing. And we have no one who's signed up, is anyone speaking? I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Consider the request of Vicky L. Nivens to replat lots 1A and 1B, Block 61 of the Nut Edition, as Lot 1AR of Block 61 of the Nut Edition. The property is located at the southeast corner of the intersection of North Cleburne Street and East Bridge Street. We will have two options, I believe. One is to approve the variances, and the other one is to approve the replat should the variances be approved. Do I hear a motion to approve the variances? Mr. Corrigan makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Vale, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. The variance passes 6-0. Do I hear a motion to approve the replat?
So moved.
Mr. Wadley?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. The variance is passed 6-0. Do I hear a motion to approve the replat?
So moved.
Mr. Wadley?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The replat is approved 6-0. Thank you. 7.3, another public hearing. Consider request of Granberry Hospital Corporation's preliminary plat, a 63.862 acre tract of the Jeremiah Campbell Survey, abstract number 122, and the John Howard Survey, abstract number 717, as lots 1 through 4 of the Martin Coleman Edition. The property is addressed as 5601 East Highway 377, PL-2023-05. Mr. Kaufman?
This has been a long time coming, so I think we've been through four hospital administrators. So we're excited to be able to get it to this point for you guys tonight. So, turn it over to Ms. Wawie to go over the details.
Thank you. So this again is the aerial showing the site outlined in blue. It's there along 377, Highway 377, and Fall Creek Highway. The site is about 63 acres in size, and this would propose to plat four lots from an existing tract. Lot 1 is the lot that is proposed for our future final plat and development of a freestanding emergency room or clinic building. This drawing shows the location of the site in blue with the light commercial district shown in pink. The majority of surrounding area is zoned for interim holding. There is some other light commercial and heavy commercial districts as well. A photograph of the property. And the preliminary plat application, the preliminary plat, this is about three slides, I think, of the preliminary plat. Right here, we see the lot in the upper left of the drawing that is the lot that would be developed first and come in for a final plat here. I don't know how long, but it'll come in for a final plat. 377 is on the, towards the top of the drawing, and Fall Creek Highway to the left. And then the site continues on this slide. This is the eastern portion of the property. And the final plat, or the final page of that preliminary plat. This is a variance request application, and the city engineer's memo. The variance is not to reconstruct Highway 377 and Fall Creek Highway to conform to the city's master plan and general design criteria. And the city engineer has determined the variance request is supported and consistent with the adopted subdivision policies and ensures continued public safety, minimum fire flow, and all these other requirements that need to be found to support the variance. This just shows that the DRC has reviewed it and supports it going through the preliminary plat phase. There were some technical minor comments that remain. These are not unusual to have with a plat moving through the system. So there's only four that remain right now. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted for, to recommend approval of both the variance requests and the preliminary plat. Staff recommends approval of both items as well. And these are your voting options. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, questions for staff? No? I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone that has signed up? The answer's no. Anyone want to speak on this? I'm going to close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion to approve the variance?
So moved.
Ms. Burwell? Well, I should read this. Consider request of Granberry Hospital Corporation to preliminary plat a 63.862 acre tract of the Jeremiah Campbell Survey, abstract 122, and the John Howard Survey, abstract 717, as lots 1 through 4 of the Martin Coleman Edition. The property is addressed as 5601 East Highway 377. There will be a variance motion and a plat motion. Do I hear a motion to make a variance?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the variance.
Ms. Burwell makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Vale, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. The variance passes 6-0. Do I hear a motion to approve the plat?
Mayor.
The preliminary plat?
Make a motion to approve the preliminary plat. Easy for me to say.
Ms. Burwell makes a motion to approve the preliminary plat? Do I hear a second? Second, from Mr. Corrigan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. It's approved 6-0. We'll go to 7.4, also a public hearing. Consider adopting ordinance number 23-38, approving a request of Rodney Farrell for a specific use permit to allow short-term rental, STR residential unhosed, in a residence 7,000, it's the R7 zoning district. The property is addressed as 124 Travis Street. This will be, it's 2023-12. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. These are recurring items for us, seems like. Go ahead, Kara, tell us about this, short-term rental.
Sure. Thank you. This site is shown outlined in teal on the aerial map. As you can see, the surrounding properties are residential, and to the west, there is a commercial facility. There's a dentist office as well as, I believe that's some type of a contractor business. Doesn't occur to me which one it is. But the site is, is there outlined in teal. Request is for a short-term rental unhosed with three bedrooms. This is the zoning showing in yellow, residential district, and then the blue to the west is the central business district with that contractor. Pink is the light commercial district. Further there to the west, there's a dentist office and a utility building closest towards the subject property. The site is zoned HPO as well as the R7. The HPO, Historic Preservation Overlay, would require Historic Preservation Commission review if there were improvements proposed to the site. And at this time, no improvements are proposed, so no required review by the commission is necessary. The history of the site has been, it's been operated as a two-bedroom, short-term rental, unhosed, and this would renew that. Consider adopting ordinance number 23-38 approving a request of Rodney Farrell for a specific use permit to allow short-term rental, STR residential unhoseded, in a residence 7,000, it's the R7 zoning district. The property is addressed as 124 Travis Street. This will be the, it's 2023-12. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. These are recurring out of Forest, seems like. Go ahead, Karen, tell us about this, short-term rental.
Sure. Thank you. This site is shown outlined in teal on the aerial map. As you can see, the surrounding properties are residential. And to the west, there is a commercial facility. There's a dentist office as well as, I believe that's some type of contractor business. Doesn't occur to me which one it is. But the site is, is there outlined in teal. Request is for a short-term rental unhoseded with three bedrooms. This is the zoning showing in yellow, residential district. And then, the blue to the west is the central business district with that contractor. Pink is the light commercial district. Further there to the west, there's a dentist office and a utility building closest towards the subject property. The site is zoned HPO as well as the R7. The HPO, Historic Preservation Overlay, would require Historic Preservation Commission review if there were improvements proposed to the site. And at this time, no improvements are proposed, so no required review by the commission is necessary. The history of the site has been, it's been operated as a two-bedroom, short-term rental, unhoseded, and this would renew that request. Actually, let me back up there. Let me make sure I said that right, because the slide says what's proposed is three bedrooms. The existing SUP is for two bedrooms. So, it increases the number of bedrooms. And this shows the buffer map that we typically will share with you at our public meetings. It shows the nearby short-term rentals of all types outlined there in the 600-foot This is the site plan. There's a long-term rental and accessory dwelling unit on the west side of the property, which is up on this drawing. That's a non-conforming long-term rental and was not required its own parking. The applicant is proposing to increase the number of bedrooms from two to three, and this site will provide enough parking for the three bedrooms at a rate of one parking space per bedroom. So, three bedrooms, three parking spaces. In front of or towards Bluff Street of the long-term rental, there are two parking spaces available. And in front of or along Travis Street for the single-family residential structure, there are also two parking spaces available. So, there's a total of four parking spaces on site, of which three are required for the short-term rental. And this is the floor plan. It's a little bit difficult to read on screen, but there are only three bedrooms in the single-family dwelling, which is where the short-term rental is proposed. The other building is intended for long-term rental. This is a picture of the site from Travis and the application. This is your criteria for the project. The city council is to review the criteria and determine these. First of all, is the use harmonious and compatible, based on the presentation of the application? And the zoning of the site is for the HPO. Therefore, the property can be compatible with a short-term rental on it. And as a reminder, it's been used that way in the past, and staff has not heard of any concerns or complaints on it. Are the activities proposed associated with proposed use, yes. Is the nature of the use reasonable? Again, it's in the HPO area, which is designated as appropriate for the use. And are other measures taken to protect the public? The proposed site plan demonstrates to be in compliance with parking requirements. And these are the criteria that are contained in the ordinance for the short-term permit. Some of this repeats what I've just said, is the use compatible and is the use reasonable? They'll comply with supplemental standard for parking. Council can provide conditions, and those are recommended. So, public notice was sent on April 27th. We sent 20 notices. And on April 22nd, we published in the Hood County News. We've received no letters in favor. However, we did receive one letter in opposition to the request. That should be included in your report. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the project with a 5-0 vote with the conditions suggested by staff. And these are the conditions the staff's recommending. The term of one year. As a reminder, it's increased in the number of bedrooms, subject to the site plan and floor plan, and not to exceed more than three bedrooms. The remaining three conditions are standard conditions referencing to the zoning ordinance and city code requirements. And these are your voting options. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Counsel, do you have questions?
Just want to restate, it's a renewal, basically.
I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Is anyone, no one has signed up. See no one raising their hand to speak. So, I'm going to close the public hearing. 7.4 is to consider adopting ordinance number 23-38 approving a request of Rodney Farrell for a specific use permit to allow short-term rental residential unhoseded in a residential 7,000 R7 zoning district. The property is addressed as 124 South Travis Street. Do I hear a motion to approve? Motion to approve with additional other conditions? Continue that, and we have other opportunities here. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the SUP with variances as presented.
Mr. Vale makes a motion to approve with variances as presented. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan, seconds? With the conditions as presented.
With the conditions as presented. Approve the SUP with the conditions as presented, excuse me.
The motion has been made to approve the, to approve the, to approve the STR as presented with the conditions as presented. And I have a motion. Your second is good, Mr. Corrigan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. It will pass 6-0. Thank you. We're going to number 7.5. Consider adopting ordinance number 23-39 approving a request of Jim and Penny Garing for a specific use permit to allow a bed and breakfast hosted in a residential R8.4 zoning district. The property is addressed as 512 North Travis Street.
Thank you, Mayor. This too is a renewal of sort. We did have, as we went through redoing our ordinance recently, this one kind of fell through the cracks. And this is the Travis Street cottages, and they have been running a successful operation for, I think, 20 years. And so, anyway, this is more of the renewal process that we've required for everybody. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Wawie to take care of the details.
Thank you. This is your location map. This aerial shows the site outlined in teal. The site is zoned R7 and is in the Historic Conservation Overlay District. The purpose is to allow a bed and breakfast hosted with three bedrooms. So, just take a minute to cover that. There's three cottages on the property, and you can see them on the aerial a little bit. It's not so obvious, but they're located to the lower right, the southeast corner of the site. And so, three cottages, each has its own one bedroom, one bedroom in each cottage. They're fairly small, but they accommodate that bedroom as well as a small bathroom and ancillary kind of functions like a bedroom would have. The host resides in the main building, which is towards the Blue Oval. There's a house right next door to that. Blue Oval is the pool. And this is the zoning map. The yellow represents single-family residential R7 zoning, and the pink to the north and the east is light commercial zoning. The, as Chris mentioned, there had been SUPs on this site for the same use in the past. And so, this is, we could think this is a re-up of the, those existing conditions or situation. This is the map we show with the 600-feet buffer demonstrating the location of other short-term rentals in the area. This is the overall site plan. And in order to see it a little bit better, I'm going to zoom into that area on the south that's outlined in green. And that's where most of the improvements on the property are located. So, as I mentioned, when we were looking at the aerial, the house that, where the host lives is to the west and north side of the property. There's two parking spaces that are required for that residential house, and they are, they have enough parking there. To the right, southeast side of the site are the cottages. Those are kind of, there's little square features on the site plan there. And there's, requirement is one parking for each cottage, since each cottage has one bedroom. So, there's three parking spaces there. Kind of a black upright line, those designate those three parking spaces on that site plan. These are the floor plans for each of the cottages. So, we have Duke, Tuscan, and Beach. Those are the names of cottages. And these are photographs of the site from Travis Street. The application, the criteria that is required to determine your decision on, is the use harmonious? Yes, it's harmonious. It's been there for a while. We have no record of complaints on this one either. At least, staff isn't aware of anything. The request, it is the use that's proposed, requested by the applicant normally associated with requested use? Yes, it is. Is the nature of the use reasonable? Yes, it's located in the Historic Compatible Overlay, which is designated for the proposed use. And they are providing adequate parking as required by the ordinance. This is additional criteria that basically repeats what we've already gone over. And it goes on for several items. This is straight out of the ordinance, a reference back to the ordinance, and that this proposal meets all of these requirements. And public notice was provided on April 27th. We mailed out 17 notices to surrounding property owners, and on April 22nd, we published notice in the Hood County News. And we've received no input from anyone, neither in support nor opposed to the project. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the SUP by a 5-0 unanimous vote, subject to the conditions proposed by staff. And the staff is recommending approval with these conditions as well. A one-year term, the site conformed to the site plan and the floor plan, and then a limitation to no more than three bedrooms with a parenthetical explanation that each cottage has one bedroom. The other conditions for five and six are standard conditions referencing back to requirements in the zoning ordinance and city code. These are your voting options, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
This is a public hearing as well. So, I'm going to open the public hearing. We have no one who's signed up. I see no one raising their hand. So, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any other comments, questions? Do I hear, let me read the, let me read it again. Consider adopting ordinance number 23-39 approving a request of Jim and Penny Garing for a special use permit to allow bed and breakfast hosted in a residential 8,400 R8.4 zoning district. The property is addressed as 512 North Travis Street. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Mayor? I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Ms. Burwell makes a motion to approve as presented. Mr. Vale has a second on them. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It is approved 6-0. And I would just like to make a comment on the work that goes into this before it ever gets to this level. I'd like to thank staff for doing such a great job, and I don't want to miss the Historic Commission and PZ as well. I mean, this goes through a lot of steps before it gets to this level and gets voted in as 6-0. Thank you for your hard work on that. Now, we'll go to 7.6. Consider awarding Granberry Regional Airport Archer Court Water and Sewer Connection Project Canary Construction, Inc., as well as authorize the city manager to execute the contract on the behalf of the city, and consider adopting ordinance number 23-40 amending the operating budget for the airport fund. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. I am filling in for Ava on the budget amendment, but I do have Chester Owen, our public works director, to talk about the Archer Court Utility Extension Recommendation. I guess maybe that'd be Michael. Which one of you two guys is supposed to do that? This has mainly been handled through KSA Engineering, which is an airport project. But with Pat in the wind this week on vacation, Chester drew the short straw to talk about this.
Yeah, Pat's in Alaska. Seems to be something about the staff going to Alaska.
Yeah.
But anyway, this is the extension of water and sewer that will go down 377 on the north, on the south side of the street. It will extend from the Archer Court Connection on the south side and extend down to Tractor Supply. The low bidder was Canary Construction, an amount of $1,705,441. Bids were accepted. There were only two bids that were proposed, one from B&amp;L Construction, and we have used B&amp;L on several different occasions. But in this instance, they were not the low bidder. Funds are available from several different sources, I believe, in your agenda package. It shows the various sources. After payment of the construction, there were approximately about $900,000 left in the construction fund for the airport. And would recommend approval of the construction bid to Canary Construction. They're from Louisville. And also recommend the authorizing the city manager to execute the contract. And I can answer any questions you might have.
And I recommend ordinance 2340 to amend the operating budget for the airport fund. And I would like to add a little color to that amendment. Basically, we're reallocating some internal funds already, so we really didn't need to take it to the council. But there is one thing that we're doing. We're taking $182,376 out of the airport fund balance and adding to this project to fund it. So, that is the need for the budget amendment, is that 182,000. So, be happy to answer any questions. We were able to get a little more money back from tax dot than we anticipated, that extra $100,000 listed there. So, we don't like spending money, but that's just the nature of what we're having to do these days for these underground projects.
Yes. They're all expensive.
Yes. Be happy to answer any questions, both of us would be.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, any questions? None? Okay. Do I hear a motion to consider awarding, or awarding Granberry Regional Airport Archer Court Water and Sewer Connection Project Canary Construction, Inc., as well as authorizing the city manager to execute the contract on the behalf of the city, and consider adopting ordinance number 23-40 amending the operating budget for the airport fund?
So moved.
Ms. Burwell moves. Mr. Rodriguez seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It is approved 6-0. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we're going to move to number eight, citizen comments on matters not on the agenda. I have one person signed up, Mr. Dave Eagle. I do not see him in the audience here. Do we have anyone else signed up? No. No one else has signed up. Move to number nine. And with that, I now declare that the Granberry City Council has convened an open session that all members are present. The city council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections, and they are 551.071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation, 551072, deliberation regarding real property, and 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We are now in executive session. I now declare Granberry City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session, and all council members are present. Any action that needs to be taken at this point?
Mayor?
Ms. Burwell?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a development agreement with Z-Tech for an onsite sewer facility pending the current moratorium.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. I'd like to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you, Ms. Burwell. Any other business? There being no other business, announce the meeting adjourned.